I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We're going to start off with the building project construction committee update. Mr. Swan.
Thank you. I'm going to give an introduction, but before I go forward with it, I'd like to go a little bit backwards and I'd like to say, I've been doing this for a better part of a decade. Everybody's used to hearing me speak, but what I'd like to say is I'd like to thank all those people on the past committees that have served on a number of committees. And with those committees, a lot of work was generated from program and site selection and budgeting, and that's all come to fruition and has often put to good use with our current committee in using that information to move forward quickly. So I'd like to say thanks to the selectmen that were on the committee, the residents that were all on the committees, early committees. Special thanks to you, Casey, for all your hard work. Special thanks to Martha, who did bulk of the work on a lot of the committees, so thank you very much. With that, with architectural projects, again, I'll just go over where we're, what a typical project is and where we are, and then we can start moving forward. So typically, you have some sort of programming, budgeting, and a conceptual design to sort of put together the very loose essence of it. And then with that, you move into schematic design. From schematic design, you've taken what is on paper to be a list of a budget or a list of program phases and put it together loosely in a plan, and then you then firm up that plan. And after approving that, and then you move forward in design development, and you really start to add the bulk of the details and mechanical systems, start early selection of like window types and exterior types and roof structural, add the geotechnical, and then you move into construction documents, which is really taking all that information and decisions and drawing the details. And in this case, for the public bid process of the 149A, drawing in a particular way so that it can go up in an organized bid. And then after the bid phase, you get into construction. So we're wrapping up schematic design. Information will be presented in the booklet, and what I'd like to do is invite John Keller up, sort of add to the process of where we are and how we are here. Thank you.
Yeah, John Keller, E3 Scotland Road. And I was on the OPM and Architectural Select team, and now I'm back on the building committee. And what I want to share is that we picked the right people. I'm an OPM by profession, and watching those two players work, they're really working well and efficiently and efficient and quick. And we're making a good headway in less than two months. So I want to acknowledge that, that we've got the right players on board. And, you know, on Fridays when we meet, we get our meeting minutes on Friday afternoon from Jeff. So that's pretty unusual, so I want that to go to confidence for the town and everybody to be shared, so.
Well, I'm going to take a chair up here. My name's Bob Connors, I'm the chairman. In front of you, you have a binder that we put together, and it's, we thought it would be helpful for the board to be able to, one, we could walk through all of the tabs of importance, but more importantly, this is a complete record of every document of every meeting. So we can skip tab one, which is just a kind of a cover letter to you. On tab two, we go into the schedule. On construction projects, time is of the essence, and that's one of the most critical milestones that we're really focused on. And to do that, it has been having a good team. And as both Eric and John have said, we have a very good collaborative building. And the next step is where we've closed out schematic design, so now we're moving into design development. You look at schematic design, look at it as one-dimensional, the floor plan. Design development is now it's a three-dimensional box. And then it progresses into construction drawings. So the next hurdle for us will be obtaining local permits and approvals. And what would be great, and I think it's important, would be to consolidate meetings, so we can consider having a joint meeting with conservation and planning at the same time, consolidate the two-week notice prior to a meeting. I think it will help our schedule, but more importantly, the stakeholders that are following the project, it's one meeting to go to to hear two different avenues. And more importantly, we may need consideration of a special meeting, where that two weeks after we have one meeting, we may be back with additional information, just to expedite it. What we don't want to do is spend 120 days on local approvals, if it's possible. You've got about five or six weeks just between the two-week notice and then the three weeks of appeal period afterwards. So you're already behind the bell of five weeks, so whatever we can do to accelerate that, that would be great. The goal is to complete the process by July, go out to bid at the end of the summer, award it in October, and come out of the ground in November. And then it's about a 12-month process. So this gives you the schedule, gives you the timeline of what our meetings are, and this is the worst-case scenario, in my mind, where we're trying to certainly meet this, but if we can approve on this, it's the difference of coming out of the ground in November or coming out of the ground next January or February. The difference in cost is, can be dramatic. So I just want to make special mention to Martha Taylor. Martha prepared a summary of all the local permits and approvals that we needed, that's on tab three. It has been a tremendous help to the committee, and more importantly, to the architect and all of his design team. Tapped out with great detail the process locally, and I want to thank Martha, that was greatly appreciated and really helped us expedite the process, so thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
If you turn to tab four, you'll hear the expression from time to time, we're still at the sausage-making stage of this process. We're using empirical numbers to create a budget. We're using, in our industry, having a percentage of your budget is set up for reserves, contingencies, or for cost escalation. We can only look back at what costs were over the last six months to a year. And both Jeff Shaw from Contractz and Kevin from Peritex have been able to help us backfill some of this. But these are, these will change weekly. The one thing I wanted to point out was, you look at line four, we have a construction escalation of 4%, or $171,000. If we hit our bid date, award date, and we break ground, we have a good chance that that will be a real number. If we miss that, that could quickly go to 10%. So that's kind of the urgency of fast-tracking this and not getting money down on one issue or another. So we're using a basis of, this actually needs to be updated, this is 9,300 square feet, or actually about 9,400 square feet. But the budget number right now, when we add this all up, with all of the contingencies, is 6.8, just under $6.9 million. Now, in that, if you look at these line items, we're carrying some money, carrying $140,000 between communication power and engineering. That simply could come in and have that. We'll have a little better idea on Friday, as one of the vendors has come in to talk to us. We're carrying a project contingency of 10%, so we have $610,000. Now, the question always is why do you carry that kind of money for a project like this? Well, simply, our soil conditions, we're unknown. Now, we've got borings in, we haven't got the geotechnical report back, but the borings is showing that we have filled land from 17 to 22 feet. So that will add some cost to site work, which would be outside of the normal construction cost, but would be picked up by contingency. So that's the reason why we carry that.
And are you comfortable with the 10%?
Yeah, that's traditional. We're not looking to spend it.
No.
But it's there, and mysteriously, as things creep in and creep out, it's giving us a reserve. The object is to be conservative on this, not to be overly optimistic.
Right.
But I always caution, at the end of the day, it comes down to what the public bid process is going to, if someone, if a vendor has a gap in their schedule and looking for a project, you may wind up getting some aggressive pricing. Everybody's projects stacked up for the next two years, that's the fluctuation you're going to have, so. But we're hopeful that we're carrying $450 a square foot, that is a very conservative number. And, but at this point, that's what we want to have. If you turn to tab five, if you turn that towards you, where it says proposed borings, you can read that. Morgan Avenue was straight ahead. Okay, is running across the bottom of your page. That is, after playing with this in several different ways, locating the police station to the right side of the lot, closer to the residential property line, seemed to be the most efficient way of doing this. Otherwise, the parking got askew, it was on both sides of the building, and looking at us that, the fire hall is still a polling place. Having that parking more consolidated on that side seemed to be the way to go. We have been working with the neighbors, they are aware of this, and the feedback has been positive. We're not going to have traffic coming down on that side, and we'll anticipate using more of a landscape buffer over there than fencing. So this, again, this will all, this is the starting point, certainly conservation and site plan approval. We'll have final say on this, but this is just where we're at now. If you turn to tab six, it gives you the schematic design of the first floor and the second floor. And Chief Riley, I think Mike has gone through a ream of graph paper, playing with squares and boxes, getting this all done. And we're at the point now where, at our last meeting, we've closed out schematic design, and we're moving into design development. Now, that's not to say there may be a couple of tweaks left on this, but primarily, we've got all the boxes to fit at each level. And again, we're, first floor, right about 4,750 square feet. On the second floor, we're at 4,670. But as you look, it incorporates everything. And I have to say, we started out at 11,500. That would be your normal programming needs by municipal standards. We've all talked about that, that that is the way it's always been done. We've certainly have taken your direction. We've looked at this in the most innovative and efficient way we can, and we're at that 9,400 square feet, plus or minus a few feet. The interesting part is, the net square footage out of 9,400 square feet is about 6,600 square feet of actual space. When you have a 10-by-10 office in conference from the space you need to actually, for task or function, is about 65, 70%. Yeah, it, well, when you take out hallways in the bathrooms and then the footprint of everything, yeah, it's, that's what it's at. So you're, we're building a 6,600 square feet of usable space, but it takes 9,400 square feet of actual space to incorporate that.
Well, on the first floor, what is the EMR, eight square feet, that seems to open only to the outside?
What's that now?
On the first floor.
Elevator machinery.
Yeah, elevator machinery.
And I see, Bob, you've got touchdown space, it looks like, you're using for the sergeants and for the reports.
Yes.
Any other place else?
If you have a chance to look through it, Alicia, we're really down to the bare minimum. We've got, the detectives are in 140 square feet for two offices. We're looking at the side, because we've got three people and 200 square feet. This, the approach we've taken is this is more we space than me space.
Yeah.
And, but we're in agreement that there's really no additional area, but without possibly missing something that down the road the PD will need. And so we, we're very confident that we can make a plausible case that this is primarily what, what we need.
Hi.
Okay, and that's really the, the end of the presentation. The rest of the tabs are just our meeting notes and the documentation that goes, that's been generated. It gives you a little bit of history of, we started out with a sketch. Mike did a little sketch of a layout and how it just transitions up to tab, tab six, which gives you, that's where it's at. But we're, I would say that it makes sense that on a, probably about a six week, every six weeks, or if there's a milestone, we'll come back before you. You're getting, as members of the board, every communication, every document, you're all getting electronically prior to our meetings or after our meetings. So the next 30 days should be pretty busy. So any questions? Well, I think Eric touched upon it, a lot of hard work was done by all the previous committees. Honestly, the easiest part of this process is actually building the book. And sorting through all of the other stuff, that takes a lot of time and a lot of energy.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Excellent work, guys, and thank you. I know you're all very busy, and I really appreciate you dedicating the time to getting this very important project done. Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right.
All right. Could I get a motion from someone to open the?
Motion.
Special permit? I think you need to read them all, thank you.
No, motion.
Alicia. Okay, a motion in a second, and if you could read it, Alicia.
Yeah. So you just?
Modification.
All right. We have a public hearing continued from 10:03, 2018, for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center, 131, 133, 151, Scotland Road, assessing map R3, lots 2, 11 in 4B. The applicant is Eric Sorensen, president of Newbury Golf Center. It was granted by the selectmen on November 15th, 2017. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project, as shown on the drawings entitled 131, 133-151, Scotland Road, Disturbance Plan of Land Sheet 1 of 1 dated April 9th, 2018, and 131, 133, and 151, Scotland Road, Buffer Zone Remediation Plan Sheets 1 and 2 of 2 dated April 30th, 2018, and described in supporting documents prepared by Newbury Associates and LEC Environmental Consultants, Inc. The applicant also requests release of a stock work order in order to implement the remediation plan and stabilize the overall site. This is currently open and vote to continued.
So what I would like is a motion to continue this meeting to 3:26:19 at 7:15.
Motion to continue the meeting to 3:26:19 at 7:15 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Chairman's report, Site GR19-15, Payroll Allen Jamison, V19-16 for the vote of the selectmen, Renee Jamison, and VW19-17 for A Greco Hotel Expense Reimbursement for MMA Annual Meeting, and Verizon Wireless Monthly iPad Expense, vote of select. Grants, gifts, and donations. We have a vote to accept a donation to the Newbury Police Department as follows: $500 from Brad and Leanne Gallagher.
So a motion to accept.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I go get you something?
Sure. For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have appointment of election work, it's for the term of February 12th, 2019, to December 31st, 2019.
Motion to appoint the list submitted by Leslie.
Second.
I'll just read through these quickly, we don't have the time to get through tonight. Maxine Balkis, Esther Burnia, Nancy Burke, Donna Callahan, Carolyn Casey, Barbara Cohen, Elaine Demos, John Elwell, Heidi Fram, Joanne Johnson, Wendy Kaminsky, Marlene Coslow, Alex McCall, Wilma McDonald, Barbara Murray, Kathy Muse, Dave O'Neil, Peg Ridden, Kathy Spurley, Nancy Thurlow, Martha Webb, Joan Wayburn, and Baba Whitmore. Big thanks to all these folks there.
Stepping forward to volunteer.
Absolutely. Greatly appreciated. Did we have a second?
We had a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
There might be double coverage, yes. We have a one-day liquor license, Byfield Community Arts Center, 7 Central Street, Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, February 23rd, 2019, 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, once we get through those, would you like to promote it? Pop it up?
I'd love to.
Okay. One-day liquor license, Byfield Community Arts Center, Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, March 23rd, 2019, 7 to 10 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Byfield Community Arts Center, Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, April 20th, 2019, from 7 to 10 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
One-day liquor license, Byfield Community Arts Center, Central Street, Byfield, Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, May 18th, 2019, 7 to 10 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to speak on that, Heidi?
We're very fortunate to have new people on our music committee, and they've been very aggressively seeking out new and very exciting people to come to the coffee house, and we've just gotten busier and more active as a result. So it's, it's been a very nice thing to have happen here in town. We appreciate the town's support for always letting us kind of do what we do over there.
How was the pool show? Was it packed up?
It was pretty exciting, yes.
Yeah, I heard that's a fun one, I've never seen them.
It is. I think they were better this year than, than last, but, I don't know. They're getting older, they're a little bit more mellow. But still fun.
Nice. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Board request to refer proposed zoning bylaw amendments to Planning Board for public hearing.
So the board actually has a long list of things that it's starting to address, but for the Springtown meeting, we're looking at, at four proposed amendments. The first one has to do with marijuana establishments, a zoning, which was adopted last year at the Springtown meeting. And the major change that's being proposed here is to revise the requirements and provisions regarding locations. When we first put the zoning together last year, the CCC regulations hadn't even been finished or promulgated. And so we're working in part off of our medical marijuana bylaw, which had certain, certain zoning restrictions in terms of buffer zones from establishments to certain, certain locations, in particular schools, daycare, other places where children come and congregate. When we finally had a chance after, after that to take a look at the zoning, and we started getting some inquiries, we realized that we were a little bit too stringent in terms of the buffer zones that we had set up. We had 1,000 feet from kindergarten, well, actually from daycare, kindergarten, grade 12, as well as other locations like the library. And one that really, that took out a lot of the northern portion of it.
That would be the area in pink, is it permissible?
Yeah, yeah, so this is business and line industrial. All marijuana uses are allowed here, including retail. Everything except for retail is allowed here and here in the Commercial Highway District. This is the Business and Line Industrial District. So we did have some inquiries regarding potential retail locations here, but between the daycare and kindergarten, that's right at 67, 69, and actually the residences, which were more an issue, we had 300 feet from property line to property line, from any residence to a marijuana establishment. And then because of all the residences that are along here, and certain residences that are actually still grandfathered within the Business and Line Industrial, that ended up taking out a lot of potential locations as well. So the board is proposing a couple of things. One, to reduce the buffer zones. The CCC regs say 500 feet from kindergarten through grade 12. So the board is proposing to cut that, cut ours back to 500 feet, but include daycare in that. And then for, and that's property line to property line, and the CCC regs, and so the board would continue to do that. For residential, because of the density of our residential, we're actually proposing to do it 150 feet, but structured to structure. And there would be some exceptions to that, actually to all of it. If, if a sensitive use is on this side of Route 1, that would be considered a divider, so it could be closer than 500 feet or 150 feet if it's on the other side. We're also proposing that we need to allow retail not only in the Business and Line Industrial District, but also in the Commercial Highway Districts, and Commercial Highway A, which is where this building is located. All of these are right at intersections with I-95, so it's, you know, not likely to cause some of the traffic congestion issues that some of the other communities have been experiencing when it's, you know, in denser neighborhoods, it's sort of easy on, easy off. So it seems to be a good location. So those are, those are the major changes that are being proposed.
So basically, it brings it more in line with the Cannabis Commission regulations.
It does, it does. And the CCC regs are silent on residential uses, and as I said before, has the 500-foot property line to property line for educational uses.
Now, I think when we spoke earlier, you said the CCC doesn't have anything about daycares?
It does not have anything about daycares, it just came through 12.
And as I don't imagine many children in daycare toddling around buying marijuana, I think that, I would recommend that we take daycare out of the reg entirely, because I don't think there's much of a threat to our, our small, small children from this industry. I don't think we should even have it in there at all. I think it's, as a source of revenue, it could be very significant for the town, and so I think we'd want to make it as welcoming as possible. I don't know how anyone else on the board feels about that, but.
There's going to be a public hearing on this, right?
There's going to be a public hearing, I can certainly, you know, Pete and I can take that back to the board, but that was something that, there was a fair amount of discussion on whether the daycare should continue to be included or not, and the final decision was to include it.
Daycare, I guess I'm on the fence about it, not so much about the influence on children, but maybe on the influence on that business, if a parent would want to put their child in the facility that close to an establishment. in the facility that close to an establishment. I mean, it doesn't bother me personally, but I'm just curious how people's perception would be.
Yeah. I mean, given the other restrictions in the bylaw, it's not like it's, you know, big flashy billboards and things like that, so, but, you know.
Definitely a good time for public hearing.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this one, before we move on?
Does it affect, does it affect, like, how does it affect the residential, the residences? You said it's going to be not, in residential, it's not going to be property line to property line, it's going to be structure to structure?
So there are, you know, there are a number of residences that are actually in here, as well as the Commercial Highway down here includes a lot of residences. And we sort of, there's a couple here, I mean, if one were interested in going into Pierce and Fawcett, for example, it actually wouldn't be possible with what we've got right now, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think if you looked at the map with the bylaw as it stands, there's almost nowhere that we actually approved.
And that's why.
And I think our intention was to make it so we could try and generate some business here that would get some tax revenue from it.
Right, right. The intention was not to make it as restrictive as it actually has ended up being, so we actually had a chance to step back.
Add the wetlands, I mean, one car, you're really locking people down.
Yeah, wetlands, perennial streams, anything like that, there's a significant physical barrier then that eases things up as well, so there's some discretion in my vision here.
So we need to kick this back to the Planning Board, and then you'll schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, so the tentative date, actually, we would have tried to do it March sixth, at the meeting last week, so our tentative date now is going to be March twentieth for the public hearing. And then any changes again to corporate, we're still waiting to hear back from Town Council as well. I've got some comments from Sam, and we're going to go back to Town Council.
Just to add on the back of what Damon said, it doesn't have to be, maybe when you guys review it, I think about it some more, it doesn't have to be taken out totally, it could maybe default to three hundred instead of five hundred, or something such as that.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Which makes it, no, two hundred feet is two hundred feet.
So who's going to be, are these residents going to all be notified by mail?
Generally, butters aren't notified for zoning amendments. We could try to do mailing to let them know.
Or at least in emailing? I think they should, because it's going to affect their properties.
Right, and they can talk to Susan about getting it on the website, and trying to get a fast out, they could get it in butters' register.
You can take care of that for us, too.
But, yeah, I think that's a good idea, to alert as many people. And we've done that before, when we did the zoning change to, you know, line Commercial Highway Industrial, we changed the outline, we contacted all butters, your residents who might be affected, so.
I would like everyone to be contacted, affected butters. Do you mean it is by email?
Yeah, we can try to do that, maybe a first-class mailing or something like that. There will be two publications, a legal ad and a paper, as well as on our, you know, the Planning Board website and things like that, so we'll get the word out, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
The second one is a change to our Wireless Communications Overlay District. So that Overlay District actually is only the Business and Light Industrial District. There is a discrepancy in our language in the zoning right now, which is part of cleaning this up, but the bylaw was actually written and adopted in two thousand and one. So technology's changed a lot since then, federal law has changed since then, so we're kind of doing a two-step process right now. The first step will be to clean up the language regarding modifications. Because right now, anybody who wants to do a modification to a tower, like change out an antenna, do co-location, something like that, has to go through the special permit process, which should be going through the special permit process, the same as they would to begin with. So the proposal is to give Sam the discretion to approve a modification, as long as it doesn't substantially change the configuration of the tower, the height, the base, things like that. And that will help bring it in more in line with some legislation which has been passed since this thing was first done. The next step, as five G comes in, we're going to probably look at a wholesale rewrite to bring it up to, you know, fully, you know, up-to-date technology, but that's not this exercise here. There were a couple of other changes in this. One, the location of a tower on a property line right now, bylaw requires it to be just the distance of the tower back from the property line. Board is proposing that it be one and a half times the vertical height, so that increases the distance from any of butters a little bit. The buffer zone between towers and dwelling, schools, daycare, and nursing homes, or assisted or independent living facilities was nine hundred feet, proposing to reduce that to three hundred feet. And notification of a butters was also nine hundred feet, proposing that that be three hundred feet. The other thing that's being cleaned up is, the bylaw was written when the Industrial District and the Commercial Highway District were actually two separate districts, it doesn't reflect the change that was made when the Business and Light Industrial District was created, so we're just cleaning that up as well, to clarify that it is just a district.
And just to clarify my understanding, that doesn't necessarily suddenly allow these things and ag residential, it just changes the regs in the business zones.
That's correct, right. It's allowed only in this, you know, only in this Overlay District here. We do have some that are outside of that district that they're grandfathering, you know, there's Sonnet Salter, and, actually, the lawn would be allowed anyway, so, but that doesn't allow them anyplace else.
I know everyone has this fear of having them other places, but unless five G is right on the back of a couple of years, two thousand and one is certainly a long time ago, and a lot of people now, especially the younger people, are using cell phones for their primary phones. And if you live in Old Town or Plum Island, behind Old Town Hill especially, it's almost impossible to really use your cellphone. So at a certain point, the five G seems to be a long ways away. It's almost public safety that we allow some sort of ability to have a cell tower in areas that are dead, because you're going to end up having someone want to use their phone and not be able to use it for a medical emergency.
I mean, when we had the folks in here for the defibrillator, they said they had to have a hard line, because so many people with medical emergencies on the beach can't get the cellphone coverage to reach it. So I kind of agree with Jeff. I also feel like, well, if the one and a half times the distance for the vertical height from the property line is about the neighbor's view, and it's in business area, I don't really see that as too viable, they're not, if they fall over, they're not like the windmills which have a lot of pieces that can come off, they'll just fold and fall down. And if something's, if we have enough wind, that cell towers are being knocked over, it's going to be messy anyway. It's not like, that's the only thing that's going to be sailing through the air at that point. So I kind of think that's a little excessive myself.
So do hold on to the fact of what Damon just said, and the fact that if we're still floating around, maybe a year, year and a half from now, with these archaic two thousand and one laws, even though no one wants one in their backyard, there's certainly plenty of places, I mean, one, even though the trustees might not like it, I mean, one cell tower on top of Old Town Hill would totally clean up the whole problem. So, they can disguise them, they can make them church steepers, they can do a lot of things for a church steeple where the weathering or something used to be, but we've got to, in these days and times, it's definitely primary phones for a lot of people.
Yeah, for a lot of people who work, have home offices and things like that, they really rely on it.
Definitely.
So, I mean, we did originally talk about doing a wholesale rewrite at this time, and decided that there, we needed to address a couple of very specific issues, so decided it would be best to get those done, and this is certainly going to stay on the board's radar, and.
I was too.
Yeah, so, and maybe there are other technologies, you know, putting repeaters on phone poles or whatever could be incorporated into this, but the board also felt that it might be helpful to bring in a consultant, somebody from the industry to help guide that, so, you know, I don't know whether it's possible to look at it for the fall, or if we're going to look at something for next town meeting, but it is definitely not going to be forgotten.
Technology changes so fast, Joe, it's possible that it's gotten, antennas have gotten smaller, like little repeaters, I like that idea. I think getting a consultant's a good idea.
Well, you're looking what they're doing with, like, the whole way of security stuff with the vows on it, I mean, there's got to be ways to, you know, without having some huge cell tower, you know, there's got to be ways to increase our cell service and that kind of, and other towns got to be up against it, so I imagine they're doing different things, too.
Yeah. So hopefully they'll find all of that out, we can bring somebody who's going to be able to guide us on that.
Good idea.
The third one is actually, it's a little bit of housekeeping in the Regulations Use District, some of your specific district spec, specific applicable regulations in residential agricultural. Right now, the Board of Selectmen is the only body listed as a special permit granting authority, but the Table of Use Regulations also lists the Planning Board and the Zone Board of Appeals. So this amendment is just to include those two other bodies listed as S P G As. Any questions, Scott, that one?
That will pertain to whatever the, whatever the subject matter coming before each board is, which who's the special permit granting authority right now?
Right, as specified in the Table of Use Regulations. So it just clarifies that the criteria for granting a special permit, it's not just the Board of Selectmen, it would apply to any other S P G A who's hearing a special permit for that district. And the final one is one that was actually requested by Sam Jostling, specifically to address situations where there's a residential property with an existing house which is going to be torn down, a new house that is being built, and he's had several requests from contractors to be able to use that existing house as a construction office when it's no longer being used as a residence. And right now, our zoning doesn't clearly allow that to happen.
It'd be on a temporary basis.
It'll be on a temporary basis only until the occupancy permit is granted for the permanent dwelling that's being built there. So a contractor, instead of having to knock down the existing dwelling, bringing a trailer and porta potty and all of that, could use the existing dwelling until the house is done and have a C O.
And from how I read this, they're required to say that they're going to tear it down at.
Yes.
On receiving the C O.
Right.
So it's not like they can stay in it, build it, and then say, oh, I don't actually want to make it down.
Right, and they have to tear it down within a certain period of time, because our zoning doesn't allow two primary dwellings on one line.
Certainly makes sense. Yeah, I mean, I would, I know some people who try and pull that, so.
That's the intention. And again, we're waiting for feedback from Town Council, and it will go through the public hearing process for a minute, so the board's request to you all would be to take the vote, please, to refer it back to the Planning Board for public hearing.
I move that we refer these back to the Planning Board for public hearing. Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please, Joe.
Thanks, Marlene. Thank you.
Okay, Minister's report now.
So since we last met, our tax rate was sad, I don't know if we discussed that since late December. The new rate is ten dollars and eighty-one cents, it was ten dollars and ninety cents last year, so all of our capitulation work is complete now. The budget is underway, preliminary budget information I should have for you for your next meeting, just some early indicators of where we stand. We received Triton's assessment today, I think some of you saw the preliminary information in the meeting that was held here. It is about a three, three and a half percent increase over last year's assessment. On your meeting scheduled for March twenty-sixth, we'd be looking to finalize votes of the Board of Selectmen. April second, I would ask that we call a special meeting for that night, so that the warrants could be executed. It's not your normal meeting night, but the Finance Committee will be taking their final votes as well. Excuse me, April eighth would be posting of the warrants, and then April twenty-third is the town meeting date. C P C has been holding their meetings as well, they have four projects before them and purchases before them, capital asset purchases. The D P W has requested a crack sealer for forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, and a sander for fifteen thousand. The Recreation Committee has requested construction of a basketball court at the Central Street Plainfield, for a little over a hundred and five thousand. And the Fire Department has requested a radio voter site on the Byfield Water Tank, and we're looking at an estimated cost at about sixty thousand. All, you know, the majority of those projects would have to go out to bid, but these are just preliminary estimates, so those will be ranked by C P C, and then recommended or not by Finance Committee. The A E D proposal that you saw from Peggy Copy and Lynn Mather, they have installed the unit on the Plum Island Building at thirty-one Plum Island Boulevard, and they're going to be holding a training session led by Sergeant Steve Jenkins this Thursday, the twenty-first, at seven P M, and if invited members of the board, if any of you are available. The Plum Island South Beach Coastal Storm Risk Management Feasibility Study, which is also known as the one oh-three study that we had talked about back, I think, last November, and the board had approved to move forward with it, it is, we've been notified by the Army Corps of Engineers that it is moving forward. That study, obviously, to mitigate erosion and future damage caused by the coastal storms, and protect the water and sewer infrastructure in Newbury on the island. So at this point now, I just need a vote from the board to appropriate two hundred thousand, six hundred dollars from the Bederman account. We need to meet our match to keep going, so.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And finally, I just wanted to let you know that Lily and Reinhold did begin her employment with us today as the Assistant Town Accountant. So introduce yourself, say hello. Assistant.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Leaving him to Diane's retirement, this is a good transition.
I mean, yep.
Sorry, it's been a long day.
Yep, yep, that's exactly, we're beginning our succession planning.
Yeah, very good.
Yep. That's it.
All right, thank you. Old business, anyone have any old business? Jeff?
I would like to let the board know, the paper didn't pick it up, but I was on that trip that the Plum Island Foundation put together with the mayor to visit the elected delegation and the Corps of Engineers to Washington. So it was Bob Connors, the mayor, myself, and Howard Malo's group. And Howard Malo's group did a tremendous job in Washington, being able to set up meetings with not only Mackey and Moulton and the Corps of Engineers, with a whole cast of players from the Corps of Engineers, which is outstanding, the director and everything, and acting director, and Elizabeth Warren's office. So a lot was done, the issue was Plum Island, the issue was especially reservation tariffs, but the issue was a lot of things on Plum Island. And I do want to say that we have a meeting coming up that Mackey is putting together with Moulton, with the Corps of Engineers and all the other players, that'll be coming up probably in the Boston office in the near future, so it was a huge success to get out and to meet all those people in one day.
It had to be.
I think I walked three and a half miles with this bad knee, you know.
It had to be a whole experience.
It was wild, it was wild. Everyone was wonderful, too, they were all, you know, we talked about a lot of things, not only in Plum Island, but, you know, trying to make the Merrimack River with its clams a little cleaner, so they were all pretty receptive to a lot of things, so.
Thank you for going, Jeff.
Okay, anyone else have old business? Electronic voting, we had a presentation at our last meeting, I want to bring that up for a vote tonight.
So you want to use it for the next town meeting?
Town meeting. And again, just to recap, reaching out to the community, I've had people at town meeting wonder if they had been counted, because when we get, when we have a smaller turnout, and there aren't big hot topics going on, it's easier to hand count and get ahold of it, but when we have a real big turnout at the school, our counters have a real tough job of it. We've had people wondering if they, I've talked to people wondering if they've been counted, I've talked to people wondering if people had potentially got. I've talked to people wondering if people had potentially got counted twice, and I've also talked to people that feel the pressure of the neighborhood they live in, or somebody sitting two rows behind them catcalling or different things of that nature, and being uncomfortable in town meeting, and I had a couple people tell me that they didn't intend to go back because of the atmosphere in that room at times, and that concerns me. I don't want to lose, you know, losing voters because they're tuned out is one thing, losing voters because they're intimidated and uncomfortable, that is very concerning to me. I'm typically skeptical of any electronic device, no matter what it is, a cellphone, a television, a computer, or even these things, but one thing I did during that presentation, you can send your vote or you can take it back. So, you know, I let this gentleman go on with his yawn, and we had people in the audience voting, and what I tried to do is kind of catch a moment when everyone in the room was a little distracted, and I was adding my vote, and I was taking it back and messing around with it, and I was relieved to see that the results registered almost instantly.
I noticed that, too.
I was very impressed with it, and I was glad I got a chance to play, be skeptical and play with it that way. It got my confidence in this method of voting. That's about all, those are my only comments about it this time.
Well, how about this, I move that we enter into negotiations for electronic voting system for next town meeting.
I was looking at...
As far as discussion, I think the decision we have to make is, do we want to own the system or rent the system? And I don't know if we want to try and make that decision tonight, but I'd say we should at least get some proposals before, so we can look at the real cost for the town.
Both ways.
And what, yeah.
The one thing, as Lachman Greco mentioned, how quickly the technology changes. We'd probably ask Susan Oyes for a recommendation on that, but I think renting would probably, I noticed a lot of the communities rent.
Yeah, and it seems like as far as the batteries being fresh, devices actually working, but like you said, we should absolutely...
I want to see the, how the numbers break out differently, you know, and, you know, if we own 200 of them or 300 of them, and then can rent when, you know, someone brings a lease law before the town or something like that.
We also have an opportunity to partner with another community as well if we wanted to share them, so we're exploring everything.
I think you ought to take just a vote, does the board want to do it?
Yeah, that's really what I was...
Before you get...
That will stray into the lead.
I just, I'm not, I'm not paid on them, so I'll vote against it, but you ought to have the vote.
Yeah, I just wanted, I thought we'd get the motion, then start the discussion, even though we're not done with the session yet.
I think that we definitely should go with it. My only concern is how many. We tried it before, remember, we didn't have enough, we got like 400 and there were 600 people, so that's my only thing, I want to make sure we have enough. Other than that, 100% for us.
I like it, I'm not, not sure if I'm a fan of purchasing them because of the technology changes so fast, and then we're going to be stuck with these things that are useless because you want the old song.
Well, how about if we rent them for a year or two and then make the decision?
Yeah, I'd like to see proposals.
I think we get the proposals in.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondents, we have a letter from Comcast Xfinity.
Hey, they're canceling more services without reducing their prices.
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
No, the price isn't cutting down, sorry.
I'm surprised.
Dear Chairman, members of the board, we are committed to keeping you and our customers informed of Xfinity TV changes. As we'd informed you in December, Star India, the owner of Indian television channels, announced that it will no longer be offering its programming to Comcast and other video programming distributors in the United States effective January 5th. As a result, Comcast no longer has the rights to carry Star Network, which has resulted in changes to our international Hindi selections as provided below. Following international services, the end of packages are no longer available. Star India Gold, Star Bart, Star Bart, Star One, Star India News, Star India Plus, Vijay, Tamil Vijay, Desi Three Pack, Z, Star India Plus, Xfinity TV Latino, Desi Four Star Pack, Star India Plus, Star Bharat, Life OK, ABT News, and Star India Gold. The following Hindi packages included the Star channels that we no longer have the rights to carry. As a result, we have removed the Star channels and adjusted the package name and price as follows. Hindi Two Pack is the old package, which will be at $24.99, turns to ZTV Hindi $14.99. Hindi Three Pack becomes Hindi Two Pack at $24.99. Hindi Eight Pack becomes Hindi Pack, and Hindi Ten Pack becomes a whole pile of Hindus. Hindi Plus Pack, ZTV, Set Asia, TV Asia, NDTV, 24 times 7, NDTV per times, so...
Wait, you turn the page.
Oh, yeah, 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 so, yeah. We won't go through it all, but it's basically all the Hindi and Desi pack, packages.
Are changing.
Yeah, they're, they're changing. Some of them are coming down in cost and getting whittled down, too, and some are going up, so that's where we're at with Xfinity this month.
It says if you were already, it says if you were receiving any of these services, you were automatically updated on January 5th, so, and you should have received a letter by direct mail, so if it affects you, you should have already been notified.
Okay, so review of meeting minutes. Do you have any?
No.
Warrants.
Motion to sign warrants?
Second. All those a favor?
Aye.
Any meeting updates?
Having a Veterans Budget Meeting, got it all passed, so all of them sent out to all the community towns.
Okay, thanks for your involvement with the Veterans Affairs.
Do you want to update the District Communications Subcommittee?
Go right ahead.
No, do you want to do it?
No, you can.
I don't think...
I mean, if you're, if you're anxious.
I don't, no, I don't know if there's anything that we can update. Do you remember anything that was, we had to bring back to the, I don't think so.
It's kind of up in the air, we're waiting on Rowley and Salisbury, at this point, really to come back with a, you know, their feelings on the budget and what they would have to do as far as an override.
Yeah, we talked about the money and, yeah, we've got our numbers from Triton.
You're talking about the meeting that was here?
Yeah, here we go.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big thing is that Rowley and Salisbury don't want to fund a school and object to the, the cost of education going up more than Prop 2 and 1/2, the Prop 2 and 1/2, half of the Prop 2 and 1/2 money that they get, so.
I don't think it's that they don't want to fund the school, I think that they can't afford to fund the school.
Let me say this, let me say this, as I said at the meeting, you blink and you go throughout commercial district.
Right.
So Tracy's done a pretty good job balancing the budget here. We're on rented town hall, we're trying to build a police station, we've got a lot of stuff to do to make our town whole and try to keep education as good as we can, so...
Yeah, this isn't a town issue.
But we really can't be, we can't be paying for...
No, and we shouldn't have to, and it's not a town issue, it's a state issue.
Yeah, state funding is an issue, but, I mean, right now, the, we have budgeted appropriately, and Rowley and Salisbury do not think they can make the budget.
And the residents stepped up for it over at last, so, I mean, the town's done everything they can.
So I saw in the paper, and I haven't spoken to him yet, Lenny Meara got appointed to the Education Committee, Subcommittee, and I'm going to be having a conversation with him about how to fix this, because the answer doesn't lie with three towns, the answer lies with the state.
And I don't think it really lies with the new answer that I hear, which is regionalizing more.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a really lousy idea.
Yeah, just look to our neighbors to the north in Vermont and Maine, they've already gone through it, and they've assumed it's not the answers.
Well, well-intentioned, it seems like regionalization always turns bad in the long run, or at least turns difficult, as communities, you know, they, early on, when trying first form, you know, Rowley, Newbury, and Salisbury were quite similar, and as the years have gone on, you know, we've all gone different paths, and our populations and the ages of our populations have done different things, and it's made it really challenging 35 or 40 years later, when budget time comes and, you know, you have aging population here, and you have a swell of children in Salisbury, and we're all faced with municipal projects and police officers and firefighters and DPW people, we need to keep on staff and keep them paid, it's, it's, it's really a tough choice, and, you know, one of the selectmen at Salisbury said it's, you know, it's really tough to weigh, you know, teachers and programs versus firefighters, policemen, and DPW, because you really need everybody, and it's just a terrible choice to have to make when you're at the end of the road and you don't think you can ask for another override.
Well, I know, and that's why it's so important that we stay on top of the, of the state delegation, because they're looking at it now, and if they don't fix it now, we're going to be, it's going to be worse for us.
But I mean, it's really, when you think of the big picture, and when you start to get into the situations other towns are where education becomes more than 55, and it reaches 60, and it gets to 62, 63, 67 percent of your budget, I mean, then you start, and I'm not saying that's what happened to other places, but I mean, it wasn't so long ago ago that people laid off 50 police officers, I mean, you know...
Well, it's going to come to a point where your town is going to go bankrupt, and that's the, that's the, and it's, I am not saying that to you...
But the only thing is, your town shouldn't go bankrupt before your regional school des, the same thing to...
Well, the school will go bankrupt as well, your law will, your law is going down together, it wouldn't sink and ship.
Law is, it's together.
It will be.
Speaking of together, I meant to ask during your report, Tracy, are we going to meet jointly with FinCom to go over the warrant items or separately?
I can arrange it. You've done both.
Yeah.
You've done it both ways.
It's just...
Do we have a room big enough?
Some do that, that would be kind of nice to try and amplify the...
So the voting, right?
Sure.
Okay, we can, I'll watch and share then. Do we have a place big enough to meet? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just sit them with their backs to the ice. Otherwise, people can throw things at them. They won't see it coming.
Okay, any other meeting updates? We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.